Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Halifax Exporter Selectmen's meeting this day, August 13th. I'll select the President. We should notify you that we're being filmed by Area 58, and you can find us also on YouTube. First thing on the agenda is to pledge allegiance, if you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a 6:30 appointment with the police chief, and he has some new recruits. Well, they're over 18, I still have to call them.
It's my pleasure to present the three gentlemen for possible appointment as special police officers for the town of Halifax. On my far right, we have Thomas Lee Reed. He's a resident at West Bridgewater. Mr. Reed served three years in the Department of Corrections, 27 years as a East Bridgewater police officer, retired as a sergeant, seven years as an armed security officer for a money, I guess, state, like almost a footnotes type thing, but it's a well-hidden, secure place in Bridgewater.
Where is that, he said?
He has a masters in criminal justice from Western Ireland College, a bachelor's from Northeastern. He's also a volunteer on the board of directors of Cops for Kids with Cancer, which is a great program, do a lot of good things out there in the community. Then we have, in the middle, we have Jay Widerboney. Jay's a Plumb resident. He's been with the Plumb County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff for the last three years. He's a Reserve admitted academy graduate. He holds a bachelor's of science from Bridgewater State in Business, and a lot of his experience comes from the private sector. Been a branch manager with different paint companies, more notably Biscuit Paints, for over 20 years. And we have Herb Walshia. Herb is currently residing in Braintree. He has 20 years of experience as a patrolman in Halifax, and he's a senior security in Florida, more recently. He's an Army veteran. Just wanted to tell you that he's a graduate of New York High School. So, you know, that's what's not over the top. All three candidates have had extensive background checks conducted by both Halifax Police and the Plumb County Sheriff's Office. They offer a wealth of training and experience that will benefit the residents of Halifax, not only in the law enforcement field, but in the private sector and customer relations field. All are being recommended by myself as special police officers this evening, and this will bring a complement of special police officers, the seven, if they're all appointed.
Okay. Why would you want to come to Halifax? The last gentleman on the line, Mr. Reed.
It's a small community. I know some folks over here that live here in the community. I've always liked it, and it just seemed like a nice place to work.
Did you meet him in the line of work, or did you just be friends?
No, 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 no. They're friends, you know, family friends and so forth. I've known people who have lived over here for years, and so it's been an excellent community.
Has the chief explained to you what the schedule is, what might possibly be, and would you be available for those hours?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Same question.
Similar answers. Nice, small, little town, community. I've spent some time in Halifax. I love your two ponds, the Twin Lakes. I do a lot of fishing. Got to know a few people. I know one of the sergeants in Halifax, and it looks like a nice little town to grow with.
Do you have the time available to do the job as necessary?
Yes. Yep. I, as mentioned, I work for the Sheriff's Department as a reserve deputy, so I make my hours.
Yeah, I work for the Sheriff's Department, too.
Yep. So if I see something from, say, Halifax pop up, you know, I take it, I make my own hours, basically.
Mr. Walshia.
Sir. Oh, I definitely would love to come back.
We've been through this before.
Oh, yeah. I absolutely enjoy working here. I enjoy the people in the community, and I enjoy the people that I work with.
And you know the town, which is a huge plus.
Yes, sir.
And the town knows you. Said good or bad.
Ah, it's more good than bad, sir. I think so, I think it's more good than bad. But I definitely, and I do have the time. I'm retired, you know, I have all the time in the world to give here.
What are you, 32? You're retired? What the hell?
Six months shy of 50.
Whoa. I'd like to be 50 again. That sounds good to me.
But I actually look forward to coming back to work here, working with the people in the community and working with the guys here back at the station again.
Chief?
I have no reservations. I think I've had plenty of discussions with all three gentlemen. They, you know, I know two of them are, basically, they're restricted on the amount of hours, but, you know, they've all shown propensity to help and, you know, put in the hours that we need to help the force out.
Any of the board members have any other questions?
I think you asked all the pertinent questions, and matters of this type, I'm always going to defer to the chief. I have confidence in his vetting people and his recommendations, so as far as I'm concerned, I'm satisfied.
Gordon? Good. Does he have a motion?
I'll move the appointment of these three gentlemen as special officers.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
Watch your six.
Good to see you. Take care.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, so you saw what you would be able to do then? And that's your contract?
Yeah, 13 years, I was about to add.
Get some sleep.
You look like you need it.
This morning after. No, 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 tonight, just something.
Mr. Brenner, have a good vacation.
Thank you.
Okay, Gordon?
Yes, sir. Do you want to do the minutes?
Please, if everybody's had an opportunity to read the minutes from June 11th, June 25th, and July 9th.
Yes, they were exciting.
So I'll move regular session meeting minutes, June 11th, 2019, June 25th, 2019, and July 9th, 2019?
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number nine for $110,616.2. Payroll warrant number 10 for $232,228.72. School warrant number 11 for $116,397.9. Vendor warrant number 12 for $612,101.8. Withholding warrant number 13 for $79,159.59. Ambulance commitment from July 15th to July 21st, 2019, for $60,841.18. Ambulance commitment from July 22nd to July 28th, 2019, for $63,786.42. And ambulance commitment from July 29th to August 4th for $2,592.65.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrant and commitment. Vendor warrant number 14 for $94,045.33. And the mobile home park fee, number eight, for $5,160.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, so then, I move to approve the approval of payment of the selectmen bills that dated August 13th. So, selectmen's expense, $42 to express newspapers. The law line, $5,568 to Michael Gilman Esquire. From the law line, $2,150 to Attorney Mayo. From the audit line, $6,000 to Powers and Sullivan LLC. Town Hall Electricity, $1,294.99 to National Grid and Energy Resources.
All but the one bill in law account. All in favor?
First, I want to second it. No, no, all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye. Hold stand for the next one.
I'll move the bill for Brooks and Durensis for $3,523.45.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a few minutes, I guess.
Yeah. This is a carryover from a few weeks ago. You've had the request for abatement for recycling bill 495, just to go back over again. Several years ago, the owner had notified the town was using private hauler. However, the owner states he didn't know he needed to notify the town each year. Another family member had said that the matter had been dealt with when it was not. The owner would like the bills for 2009. There's $5. It appears that the board abated this bill, but the late charges never deleted. 2013, 14, 19, 18, 17, 16, 15, and 10 abated. And so the board decided to carry this over until today.
Well, we showed that the person wasn't aware of it being necessary. The person that's supposed to tell him didn't tell him that they were doing. That's kind of changes. What's the board's stance?
I empathize, but it's a slippery slope in terms of, you know, how do we know who knew and who didn't know? I wrestled with this. I have a problem with abating this. Nothing personal, of course.
Well, when did he notify us that he was made aware?
Well, this was before the last meeting. He sent, and there's a letter in the file requesting the abatements.
And he's been in the home? I forget how long he's been in the home.
Well, I think it's been.
Was he ready in the home?
I think it's been for a number of years. I just, I don't know why, when he moved in.
Did he ever send us the letter stating that he had a private hauler?
Yes. In fact, it's evidence from the '09 bill, the fact that there's a $5, the only charge there is a $5 charge.
And he doesn't want to pay the $5?
Well, normally, the board would, in fact, abate the $5 when it abated the $50 or whatever the fee was at that time. Probably what happened is that we were dealing with a situation in '09. If you remember, the board didn't set a firm deadline back then. And so what happened was that we were getting abatement requests, but there was also a late fee, and probably it was a bookkeeping situation where the board abated the actual charge in '09, but didn't abate the late fee.
Did we receive from each year a request to abate?
No, that's what, that's the problem, is that though, '09, they did more than likely, but what happened was in subsequent years, he's saying another family member said that she was taking care of the matter, but never did. And now, there's, not to go, he's now responsible for the property, but all these bills are still outstanding.
So the, to the town, so he had a private hauler the whole time?
Well, that's what he's claiming, yes.
And the town didn't provide the recycling service?
I don't know what would have happened or not happened. I would assume we didn't, we didn't, in fact, do so, since we don't do pickups for those households that haven't paid. I mean, the drivers have lists showing who hasn't paid, and so they won't, if there's recycling put out, they won't pick it up.
I'd be willing to abate this if I had a letter from him, from his hauler, saying that they, in fact, were doing business with this man for the years that he's asking for it, because we've only received their name for 2009. And I'm willing to abate that, but the others, they're supposed to notify us each year.
I wouldn't have a problem with abating '09, but I'd go along with that if they can give us some evidence that they were not using town services.
I need something more concrete than to say, "God blots that he has." For these years, we're not going to, we're not going to charge it when, in fact, he didn't follow the procedures if it was necessary. If he knew to send it, ask for an abatement at 2009, I would hope that someone told him that he has to do this on a yearly basis.
Well, lots of people are under the misconception that if you do it once, that's it. In fact, that's one of the reasons why we added a language to this year's recycling bill to emphasize that they need to file for the abatement every year. We've run into that on a number of occasions. I'm not saying they shouldn't know, I'm just saying we've reemphasized.
How does the board feel about extending this, continuing this, since the last time we hear back from him, whether he's got receipts or something to show that he was paying a $500?
I'd be okay with that. I'd give him every opportunity.
Gordon?
If he's got receipts that prove that he had a private hauler for those years, I'd be willing to abate it.
Well, probably what will happen is he'll try and get a letter from the hauler, similar to the letter we use every year, which basically says, you know, "Hauler X says that Jane or Joe has been a customer in this case for all these years, including for recycling."
I'd like to see that. I mean, we've got to be fair to the people that do pay their bills.
Well, I'm trying to be fair with this. The only way I know to be fair for him is if it produces, in fact, he has got bills that he's at a private hauler all this period of time, but I can understand it.
I'd be on board with that.
Okay, so unless the board tells me otherwise, we'll continue this for the next meeting?
Yep. And we'll reach out to them to see what they can provide.
Okay. We had a meeting last week about town hall space allocation. We had a fair amount of discussion, for at least on a temporary basis, in a sense of there's still discussion about moving IT up to the second floor, to the closet that's up in the front of the building. But saying that aside for the moment, they did a lot of work in the assessors office at suite, and also in the IT office, moved a lot of stuff around, a couple of items moved over to the second office, and now Caesar has a way of getting out via the door that connects the assessors suite with the IT office. So that got done. There's still discussion about moving IT to the storage room in front of the building on the second floor. I know some equipment got moved out. If more storage is needed, there's an idea of putting a mirror image of that storage, not unit is right, but basically where we sometimes put coats or chairs or whatever combination, over on the other side of the great hall. So they're looking into that, but also they'll need to do some wiring and such. It's going to be an extra cost to do that beyond what was presented in the wiring proposal. It was, initially, we weren't thinking about doing that, and that would be a change order of some sort, and we'll have to get a cost.
For cabling you talked about?
Yeah, right. We talked also about adding a chairlift for the stairway in the building, and that would provide direct access to that section of the building along with backup in case the elevator can't be used. And we'll need a structural engineer or architect to get an estimate for the design cost, and I'll contact Scott. I think Scott was there, but I'll formally make a request, and municipal school building committee to follow up on that. There's also a little change, a discussion about switching land use in the regulatory office and the selectmen's office. I don't think, right now, there's anything in that direction, but there was some discussion about that as a possibility. We also talked about starting to check with the Secretary of State's office about digitizing documents and come up with some sort of request proposals or invitation for bid for such work so that we could bring an article to a future town meeting, not probably one this fall. We've run out of time for that, but maybe for the May town meeting. The idea being that one of the problems a lot of these offices have between the space they have in the offices and the space available down the cellar, that we're running out of space to store everything, and that digitizing may be helpful to reduce that need.
Are we still following the rule that after seven years, certain documents can be disposed?
Yes. Depends on the type of document.
Press mail documents can't.
Right, as an example. But some documents have various lives, in which case the department tries to review those types and gets rid of them. They have to contact the Secretary of State's office and notify them or anything, but they can do that. Somebody mentioned that Plumb had gotten money for a chairlift. That was an earmark in the fiscal 2020 budget. It wasn't a grant program per se under ADA.
It was actually a lift, not, they had gotten one previously for a chairlift, but they got a grant for a lift.
Yeah, it says lift-type elevator for $95,000.
Yeah, form of elevator, exactly.
I mean, there's nothing preventing the town from, you know, for the fiscal '21 budget contacting our legislative delegation, asking, "Well, maybe this year we, maybe try Vermont Pots and a chairlift," as an example. But probably the thing to do is, in the meantime, have the municipal school building committee get it designed, get an estimate, so that we could go back to our delegation and say, "Hey, this is how much it would cost."
Typically, the lift companies will provide that part of it.
We're going to skip over National Grid. We're going to see them, I believe it's seven. IT access policy, I had, this is regards to state legislation that might require the town to provide access to our email systems for non-governmental employees. And what I did was, having worked with both our rate work council and labor council to develop an electronic communication information policy for non-town entities and individuals, basically, they'll have to sign off on the IT policies of the town, they'll have to provide sufficient insurance for cyber security protection that's equal or exceeds the town's, and then they'll also have to take the orientation training course that's going to be offered by our IT specialists. I think realistically, none of this is going to be happening. The reason is that the people who might have access are going to end up being inundated with having 42 different email addresses that they'll have to follow, which would be difficult for them. So they probably not want to get an email address and use the town system, but at least we'll have this in place if that came to pass.
What's the estimate of time of finishing that?
Finishing which?
The system.
Well, there's, everything's already set. I mean, if somebody, you know, Frank Swab, a new employee coming in next week, then Caesar just sets it up and does it in a couple of days. But if we had a non-governmental entity or individual for whom we were required to provide, then they would have to meet all these stipulations. So I was asking if the board would approve this policy.
Any discussion on it?
So you don't think it's going to get done at all?
I don't think that people are going, despite the fact that the state legislature will pass that legislation, turn it into law, and that therefore individuals who aren't municipal employees under certain conditions could be granted, would be required, we'd be required to provide access, I think the logistics for that person are going to be difficult because that they would end up having, you know, if they wanted to do this, they might end up with 40 different email addresses. You know, one for each community or one for each type of email system and such, and that would prove, they'd have to monitor all those. And so, I mean, we have enough problems, you know, doing home and personal, having 40 places that you have to check makes a difference. Now, but what I'm saying is that if it came to pass that somebody made that request under the new state law, we'd have a policy in place that is equal to the requirements we have for our own employees.
Okay. I'll move it.
Say a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We had two change orders come in for the fire suppression system. One is for, in essence, a negative. It's a credit of $306.10. It included work on repairing the water damage ceiling joists in Wing C and also relocated Wing C fire protection controls. The second change order was for $18,322.66 for work on the fake chimneys to ensure that the necessary fire suppression was installed there.
Wasn't it actually, the credit was $3,000 and ended up being $300 because of the $18,000 charge?
No, there's a $2,901.20 charge here.
Okay.
So the first change order was a combination of two stopways.
Then there was a credit.
Right.
Okay.
So you're correct about that.
I just had my number.
You comfortable with it?
Yeah, yeah, I'd see it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
And just, we still have a week, basically a week, one hopes to go from today till the 20th. We have two more review meetings, one's tomorrow, one's on the 21st, to basically say we're done.
Scripter guys, I think, are pretty much out of there today and should be out of there completely tomorrow, so. The contractor still has some work to do.
So I haven't, I haven't heard anything from school staff or the contractors or anybody else involved in projects saying that something's occurred during the last few days that would delay things, so it seems to be in good shape there. Earth removal, John Peck. Gordon had emailed me about people posting on Facebook about the situation with his earth removal permit. I wrote to Mr. Peck, I got no reply. Kathy Dryden, just, wasn't related to this in the sense of she had gotten questions about odors coming from the property and investigated with Mr. Peck's permission, went on the property, and found there was a fair amount of sewage being piled up for use in the fields and such, to be tilled into the fields. But you can't just simply let it sit. You need to actually use it and get it into the fields, and that hasn't been happening.
Is this on Thompson Street?
Yes. And in addition, there was a large number of stumps that appeared to be in a depression or cut that looked like the intention was then to bury those stumps, which you need a separate permit to do also. So the Board of Health has issues on those two things. We have the issue on earth removal. I've not heard from Mr. Peck, and I don't know what the board would like to do at this point.
Today, opportunity for us to send a courier down, like a police officer, and have them deliver it, especially if it's in jam, so we can get some response from them, because otherwise, we can start fining them, finding them each day that if the work's not done and we don't hit for them.
Do you have a recommendation?
I don't, I don't think the problem is him getting the notice. The notice, I mean, I know he's around and available, and I'm sure he's getting his mail. Without going into a lot of details, I don't know the capabilities of he and his family at this point of handling all these matters. I think that's one of the problems that's happening right now.
Did he send a letter to him on, what, the 25th of July?
Yeah, before he went on vacation, yeah. So it's been two weeks.
That's ample time.
So, I mean, I guess the last, the next thing would be, normally, the board would send a letter saying, "Okay, we're starting fining on such and such a date unless we get something in from you." That's what we've done with lots of other people, very, not just earth removal or anything like that, but lots of different type.
You are?
Sorry, sir, I live behind, Pat.
I'm sorry.
Can I speak to this man?
Who are you?
Frank Drissel, Taylor Woods, sir.
It's not up for discussion at this point, Tom.
No, it's not?
No. We're trying to make a decision how we're going to go about doing this, and I don't know whether or not.
Something's got to be done. The owner is, I haven't opened my handles in two months.
When you say sewage, what are we talking about?
Well, I don't, in the sense, I don't know, but it's human waste.
Oh, okay. Is that stuff he's dredged out of the?
No, it's sewage. I mean, it's waste product.
Okay, I was just.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
When you said sewage, that rings the bell.
I don't know the origin of the waste product. I don't know if it's human or otherwise, but as this gentleman said, they must try and went out there to confirm odor problems and complaints. That's under the Board of Health.
Has she sent anything to him?
I don't know that she has yet. I know that she's, she's been out there in the last few days to confirm. I think she was out there on Friday.
What's the board wishes?
Clearly, we're not getting any response. A letter indicating a deadline with a fine is probably appropriate.
So what I would do, if the board wants to, I'll send a cer bite letter out tomorrow, give 10 days. If we don't get a proper response, and that means some sort of permit application or the information to the So what I would do if the board wants to, I'll send a cer bite letter out tomorrow, give ten days. If we don't get a proper response, and that means some sort of permit application or the information that the board asked for, which is at a minimum, with the amount of tonnage, tonnage, square yard, cubic yards that were removed. If we don't, then starting at that eleventh day, we'll start the fines.
Yeah, as far, as far as the orders and stuff, I mean, that's.
That's through the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Okay.
This has gone on a long time.
How long has it been?
It's been months. I mean, in terms of the earth removal, I don't know about the septic, but, because that's very recent in the sense.
The septic is the most recent article, but we've been trying to get, since there was a complaint on him moving so all our material off his property without a permit at the time. It's the how much he moved. We still haven't received anything.
But I think we were dealing with this situation certainly way last year, if not earlier.
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been a good, good time.
Okay, I'd second Tom's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, sir, my apologies, but it is, the odor problem's going to be through the Board of Health. I know you'd like to see something happen, but it's going to have to be addressed through the Board of Health, not the Board of Selectmen.
So do I call him?
Yes.
Something's got to be done, thank you.
You're welcome. New growth, just, we'll have the tax classification hearing in a couple of weeks, but just in preparation for setting the tax rate, the assessors certified the new growth is one hundred and thirty-five, five fifty-nine. We went to town meeting, assuming it was one hundred and thirteen. So the added money's going to help reduce the tax rate slightly, since with new growth, you're increasing the base that you're using, you know, to calculating the tax rate on. So that's good news.
And we got, you got time for one more visiting nurse?
Visiting nurse, just so the board's aware, council's working with the VNA of Kate Cott on the contract language. And I just saw, I got CC today on that email, so the work's continuing on that.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, and we have before us at this time Ryan Press. Take a look at gentleman in the front row. He brought up extra bodyguards today, I see.
Yeah, my usual coworkers are better than that.
I'll become in all safety sizes.
You can never have enough support.
I used to do it in the salon, don't bother me.
Obviously, he's the nature of it. From looking at the type and.
So can you bring the board up to date as to anything that's occurred since you met with the board a few weeks ago?
Yeah, I brought a time out to take a look at a couple of the trees and through the parts of the circuit. I showed them some of the work that we had already started over in East Bridgewater, so they could have a good idea of the scale of the work and what it would look like afterwards. I took them over to the Washington Street section of the three phases, which we had just finished working over in East Bridgewater, you know, around fifteen hundreds area of Washington Street over there. That's pretty much where I left off with them, was just making sure that they knew exactly what was going on, you know, make sure they had a good idea as to what we're asking to do.
Since, since the work on the Cape has died down somewhat, I won't say it's completely over with, yes, the time, estimated time of when you're going to be coming to town to do your, to do Halifax.
I have Tree Cruise, but the Tree Cruise are working on something else at the moment. I think they're going to be gone for a couple of weeks while they're setting up some area for some new three phases that has to go up. We're going to do Pembroke before we do Halifax, because that's already been set up and painted and everything. It's, it's the same circuit, so the circuit's getting worked, so, but I probably would figure about two months or so down the line before Tree Cruise should be hitting into the town Halifax. As far as when they was, you know, starting the first property, that'd be my, my estimate. It could be a little quicker, it could be a little bit longer. It all depends on how quick we can get through the work that's already been approved.
We, we did take a tour, and I have to say that all the work that I looked at that had been done previously looked appropriate. Nothing was done more than necessary. Some of the trees that we looked at on Elm Street, I, I understand it would make some people unhappy, but at the same time, you can see the load over the lines, and some of those, if they were to be trimmed quite that much, it would destroy the tree in any event. I, I, I think, I think the work proposed is appropriate. As far as the trees on personal property, that's something they have to work out with the property owners. I, I, I understand that we've been asked to consider doing some stump grinding and/or doing some tree planting. I don't know how you do that for any one or two individuals without opening the door to have to do it for anybody who asks for it. I think that becomes Pandora's box. I, I, as much as I'd like to do that for people, I, I can't see us being responsible and taking that kind of a course. But as far as the work itself goes, I, I didn't see any, anything that was being done that was unnecessary.
I took a drive down, and I really know what I was looking at, but I still looked at the trees, and I, I concur with what the state would make, some of those trees are. So, slight sacrifice for hopefully keeping electricity on during the winter months and the cold changes. Gordon?
Yeah. The, the only thing I think the town should consider is when the, if, if there are stumps that are left high that interfere with whatever snow piling that needs to be done, or if they can push back the snow further on the roads.
I, I think that they have a plan to address that, yeah. I, I didn't mention that, but yeah, we did discuss that.
So we do remove stumps in specific cases where it becomes an endangerment to, like, a snowplow. So let's say, like, the tree's right at the edge of the road.
Yeah.
And, you know, we cut it low and you get six inches of snow, and you're going to have to see the stuff. Like, those stumps, that stuff that we are typically, we're passing care of.
Okay.
We generally work with the town on that stuff, just because we leave a hazard behind. But, you know, the stuff that's further back where the plow shouldn't have issues or, you know, hills and stuff, we don't generally do that stuff.
And there is something to speak to, a little bit about it. We do have a tree planting program that we can offer the town to.
Is a grant available, so for, for the town purposes, to the mass DCR urban forestry, we can give a five thousand dollar grant, which the town can use to replant trees on public land.
Cool.
That sounds good.
It's an in-kind, so if we give five thousand dollars, the town has to then contribute, and it can be through planting materials that would count towards legal.
How long, how long is that available? Is that open-ended, or we have to go in and request?
It's open-ended, but you do have to work with the state to get a planting plan approved, so they, they look to.
Could you just start over again, because Steve Hayward, who's our highway supervisor, who's also a tree warden, just came in?
Yeah.
Because he may or may not know about the grant program you're talking about.
There is a, a grant that we fund through the state DCR urban forestry, that we make funds available for towns, where we do substantial tree work, which the town can apply for. And once the planting plan is approved, the state releases the funds, you purchase the tree, nursery, and you can plant the trees on town property. So at school.
There's so many you can do, is it?
It's, it's, what do you mean?
Not a tree.
So it's five thousand dollars. So depending on the species, the size that you pick, you can bury it based on what you want.
Can't buy a redwood for a thousand dollars a piece.
Well, they'd be lime-friendly trees in any event.
They will be.
The, the state looks at the planting plan to make sure it's the right tree in the right place. So we do not want to have, like, a white pine, for example, underneath the pines, that would be set back.
Do they have to be planted in the same area where you cut, or can they be planted anywhere in the town?
Anywhere.
So we cut down the trees over there on the ground, make the parking lot.
Yeah, because we got a lot of, a lot of lousy trees on the.
A lot of towns usually plant in the parks or in schools or around the town hall and stuff like that. This is generally more open area, you know, especially in this town, where we're taking a lot of trees out of a wooded area. We can't really put trees back yet. So, you know, that kind of stuff is what a lot of towns do.
Okay. Well, thank you for the affirmation. Thank you.
Charlie can come to me next to Abbe Day too, or before Abbe Day, and maybe we can do some sort of, you know, a tree planting on that day, you know, do a little celebration or someone for that too, at the same time. And I also just, from my standpoint, I think it's important to know, and I know you're probably well aware, but I was before the board, and I think it was, it was the last spring, because there was concerns about outages in the town and the length of time of the outages and how, how long it took to get everything back on. Well, this is a direct relation to that money that's being spent here, repay this money that's being spent here on, on this program, on this particular feeder. It's one that has a lot of exposure on it because it comes out of East Bridgewater, Hanson, Halifax, Pembroke. It's, it's a long feeder. So the opportunity came about to this program to, to spend the money, he had to take these trees that we've determined that are going to be an issue, and that at some point could be coming down and causing outages, so I think it's a good thing for everybody.
I think we all acknowledge that, that that's why we were here.
Well, thank you for the update. Anything relevant that we need to know about?
Just, you guys make a decision. If I can have a tree warden sign the permits, and that's pretty much all that's left.
We need a motion?
I think you have a couple of people that weren't here at the last meeting that might want to speak.
Oh, I, is anyone here for the trees, the tree kind, Rooney?
Yeah, I'll hold them down. Pretty easy.
Anyone else? I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I'll third it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for the trip.
Charlie, you got another ten minutes?
Plastic act legislation, the state legislature's looking at House Bill three nine forty-five, which would be a weaker law concerning one-use plastic bags. It was approved in Halifax, a large number of other communities, and would supersede the local bylaws. The, I know the purification committee, I believe, has indicated an interest in.
Well, we're supposed to meet with them, weren't we?
They're here later. We could talk with them about them.
Yeah, let's talk.
So let's do that. The revocation hearing for Davis is later. We'll get to that. Ambulance evavens. We had a whole, but basically, they're trying to do a lot of catch-up and getting rid of a number of years' worth of old bills that are, they're deeming as uncollectible. I can, I'll list them just for the record. So fiscal year 2013, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents. Fiscal '14, one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Fiscal twenty-five, sorry, 2015, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eight cents. In more recent months, February of nineteen, seventy-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five fifty-seven. March of nineteen, ninety thousand, eight sixty-two thirteen. April of nineteen, eight six nine seventy-seven ninety-two. May of nineteen, one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. June of nineteen, seventy-six five thousand, five hundred and two dollars and twenty-six cents. July of nineteen, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. So the collector's office is asking that those amounts be evaded.
I'll move it.
Can I ask a question? So with the newer ones, is that under the new program where we're using an outside giving company?
Yes.
So.
Generally, the fees went up considerably.
Sorry. Yeah, so generally, what happens is that bills go out, they're partially paid by the insurance company. They may not be the full amount.
Okay.
But, um, once we've accepted, the insurance company pay them. We don't generally go after the patient, the person who's on the ambulance run for the rest of it, and so the remainder is evaded.
Okay. So just with the, with these numbers, is that typical to what was happening with the program before?
It's higher, obviously, because you, you know, with the new programs, you pointed out, we're now billing, collecting and billing more than we used to.
Okay.
So that, um.
They're in line.
Yeah. I mean, the older, you can see, obviously, as you're playing out, the older amounts. I think tho, those are sort of the remaining amounts. Basically, sort of, there were two tiers of the evavements that are happening. These are the, the ones for thirteen through fifteen. We had gotten, in some cases, no money was collected for those bills, and basically, the collector and, I assume, the firm she's working with now are saying, "Give it up. Just write these off. If we didn't collect them six years ago, we're not collecting them now."
Okay.
You need a second?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So a couple, a bunch of signature type of stuff here. One is for the Council on Aging Formula Grant, just have authorized Troy to sign that. Troy's already signed it, but we wanted to have it on the meeting on the record. This is the formula grant that the Council on Aging receives each year.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then the complete streets policy letter showing the town has the intent to become a complete streets municipality, so it's been sent to the Department of Transportation a week and a half ago.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then there are a bunch of signature authority. There's no motion needed, just that the board sign those forms. FMLA leave for Susan Lawless and for Joseph Cushman. These are separate applications that the board needs to approve, but there's no, I didn't see any place for any signatures, so it's just on the record that the board approves these. We don't go into the details on FMLA leave and the reasons why, which was dealing with HIPAA, but nevertheless, has to be on the public record that the board approves them.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, Pat, share them up.
Sign this one.
Okay, you signed down here also. The director.
Where they sign right in the very middle, after they go out to sign. The, the guys go out to sign. No, on the one that Troy has in mind.
Yes.
They just assign right in the middle.
Well, Troy's already signed the one in right in the middle, but then there are signatures down at the bottom.
Gene brought them back down. They didn't sign in the middle section.
Well, okay, maybe you can work with them, pass them down to.
Pass that one, just pass that one down. I'll throw the signature back.
The director for OCPC is retiring in a couple of months. This is Pat, and they heard him, you know, whether it's a hard C, a soft C, or CH.
Trimaral.
Trimaral. And that's October, Troy fifth. So we have invites here on October, so board is interested, they're here. We're likely to have an MNA legislative breakfast here at Town Hall on October fourth. These are the regional ones. They hold each fall and spring. You know, they're usually now, I think, six o'clock to state over a couple of Fridays. They used a great hall before for other events, and I like the idea of having them here, so I'll confirm when I get the date and time confirmed. But my hope is that you'll save that date on your calendars to come. Let's see, we've got Old Data Road. So, things going on the last few weeks, Joan Pierce has checked with her legal staff about any possible needed legislation, since the 1998 version had an expiration date, but she may be able to get through that without having to re, have a new Article ninety-seven legislation filed for the transfer of the sliver to the town. Plymouth County Commissioners have given the green light on all the land transfers. I talked to Frank Basslerington-John this morning about that, so they'll, it's going to take a little, you know, number of steps, but they're on board for doing the transfer of the two parcels ultimately from the county and the town to the state, and also the town receiving that sliver of land back. We're going to need to, if we want to move forward, we'll need that article, the special town meeting in the fall, appropriate the necessary money, obviously, then we'll get the money from the state to more than balance that out, but we'll have to pay the county first in order to gain one-hundred percent ownership of those two parcels, the one that has some value and the one that really doesn't.
Swamp land.
Yeah. I checked with Steve Hayward. He confirmed that the sliver would be sufficient to establish the needed right-of-way for all data road construction work. I talked to Trudy Mayo, because there's a stipulation that the town would have to make improvements on the road within five years, and since there's no definition for the improvement, as long as we go out there and use the shoulder for the improvement and such, then we're got, we should be fine. And so that's where things stand on that. We did get a note from the planning board. They would, had sent a note in based on our August first meeting, that the planning board would like to advise the Board of Selectmen, that they'd like to be involved with hiring the new secretary for this board. Rob did mention that the secretary already has been hired, but we could, if the board wanted to have a meeting with Rob and with members from the three boards and committees, the conservation planning and the ZBA, to talk about the hiring process for all those positions in the future, the board wanted to set something up.
Sounds like a better move at this point. I mean, you can't go back and redraw it. Were they aware how long ago that we advertised for this position? Did they just now see it down?
Well, I, I don't know what they were aware or not aware of. I think, you know, they were, obviously.
Because that's been a while since that, that position has been vacated.
Well, I knew that they, well, obviously, they knew that it had been vacated because they had been notified by the previous incumbent that she was leaving. But I, the thing is, they only meet twice a month, so they don't have a chance a lot of times to actually get together. a lot of times to actually get together and even do a letter like this. So, while we were moving, while Rob was moving ahead with that process, they weren't meeting and they're only in August 1st, so, for instance, the 13th is today, it's been 12 days since they met, you're getting this note now. And even in between then, Rob had finished the interviews and hired somebody.
I, I think it's a good idea to have a sit-down, because when this thing, the inception of this whole thing, was that the regulatory board was not necessarily a specific secretary for any particular board. It seems to have worked out that way, but the idea was that all, at the time, three secretaries were versed at least enough in each other's work...
Right.
...to be able to fill in, to be able to answer questions, because we had a staggered...
They're all part-timers.
Right. We had a sta- scattered, yeah, scattered.
So, who's ever there on Thursday, or that person would be, like, answer the basic questions, pull the forms, get them to them, say, "Here are the things you need to be doing."
And be able to adequately fill in at a meeting with some basic knowledge. What's happened is that everybody seems to have become dedicated to a particular board, but, so, the discussion probably should be had.
I agree.
Excuse me. May I add to that?
Sure.
As the planning board, I mean, we just want to be included in what's going on.
We left in the dark, we didn't have a secretary for the last two meetings, we don't know what's going on, nobody's explained anything to us about it, and it's, you know, kind of our impression that it's the board's obligation to get tasks done, and so we need to know who we have to do that and where we're moving with that. So, I mean, we just want to be included in the process. We feel like we're left out in the dark. We didn't, nobody said that, you know, Rob was going to appoint this person, you know, who this person is, we don't even know how many hours there are for the secretary. We've been told that it's regulatory, that's it. I mean, you know, is it our secretary or is it not our secretary? Does the secretary have duties to the planning board or not? That's, you know, that's why we would like to sit down and have that discussion.
Those are fair questions. Yeah, well, we could schedule a time that we could sit down and do...
At this point, it'd probably be September, simply because August is, or the 27th meeting is...
And Rob's away, so...
The only input I would give is, finance committee, wage and personnel, all hire their own secretaries. Those secretaries report to the board, and I think if you have, you are tasked with getting things done in a certain period of time, like most of the boards are, it makes sense to have somebody responsible to that board.
Yep. Okay, what day do we have open?
Well, it probably won't be before September, I believe we're meeting the 10th and the 24th of September.
Okay. Well, we have a 7:20 to you with our fireworks committee. You didn't bring any firecrackers or anything with you?
Did you say with me?
Well, well, no, we haven't said a date yet, we're going to look at the schedule and try and work out, and we'll notify people with plenty of time, that's one of the reasons why we'll do it in September, it'll either be the 10th or the 24th.
10th or 24th. All right. Has the secretary, can I?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, she'll start, in fact, on Monday.
On Monday?
Yeah. On Monday, 26th? 26th, yep, sorry. Yep. So, two weeks, I'm sorry, Gordon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
So, you bring any fireworks?
No, no fireworks.
So, it's going to be a quiet meeting, is what you're telling me?
It is very quiet. Um, no, just to recap, I guess, of the show, because we do things differently, wanted to get your feedback from your board, and then talk to both this coming year.
Well, all I know is I had a nice seat in front of the library watching the fireworks, it was great.
After the rain.
It didn't rain.
It poured, it poured.
It didn't rain, it drizzled a little bit.
Oh, no. It was, our, we canceled Friday night, we were at our house having a conversation with the fire chief, fireworks company, he was like, "What are you doing?"
The question is, how do you feel it went?
I think it went well, I think it... Um, are we having concerns about the money for this year? We've already had a follow-up meeting with fireworks company, um, they've advised us that the cost is probably going to go 25% due to the tariffs.
Oh, that's right.
So, we'll be raising even more money. So, this year, the fireworks alone were $9,500.
So, maybe we'll move it more like 12 to 13.
So, we're already get our wheels spinning, so we're just raising to start. Maybe in October, we'd like to do, use the town hall to have a craft fair, slash yard sale, and town greeting, um, into the yoga that we used to do, or we're doing, our other members, which you did the yoga classes. Um, Kathy's going to do, like, do a paint night here, so I guess, can we, you keep just asking to do, use the hall?
What type of night?
Because it's still like, well, that's the, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, what type of night?
A paint night.
Oh, you mean face paint?
No. Just because, no, it's regular painting and picture.
I know, that's good. Oh, okay, well...
They do this on cameras, they do this on wood, they put it around the end. Um, then the other one that I'm not sure if we even would be able to do is maybe a wine and beer tasting at the country club, and have the vendors come in, and nobody would buy anything there, they would have a list, I've gone to them myself, and then you buy them off-site somewhere else.
You put an order in that night, for instance?
Yeah, you put your order in there, so you charge like a $25, $30 admission, you go in and you taste things, maybe we do appetizers, but again, because we fall into the town, I'm lucky to take two bars as far as what we can and can't do.
Would you have to give them the liquor from that?
No, no, well, you might have to, yeah.
Well, then...
But you do it one day, um, go, sorry, go ahead.
Well, we do it, yes, either at maybe the country club, or maybe VRs, if he's back open, some of it's that already serves alcohol.
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
That would, that would be, look at my celebrity on that, not us, but...
Does anyone do that now? I mean, has anyone done that in town that you're aware of?
No, definitely not.
So, there's something new or novel.
I don't know, I was thinking in January, when everyone's already done with the holidays, and just a Saturday night to go out. Again, just to...
I don't think there's any legal issues, except for...
If there are, there are ones that can be surmouted, without a problem.
I would be agreeable to that.
And then we're looking for lots of people to help join us.
Everybody's looking for that.
I know.
Is there anything else you'd like the board to be doing?
Um, the other thing was the, we had the one issue with this one vendor, we reached out to vendors, so we knew specifically which vendors were coming, and we told them exactly what they needed to do.
That wasn't the one in the truck, was it?
Yes, that was the one in the truck. Um, that was across the street, that we had to ask, I asked him to leave, after the police had asked him to leave, because then he still didn't leave. Um, and he's asked if he could go to Rockland Trust, I'm like, "Sure, that's their private method," so, um, but we reached out to specific vendors so that nobody had any competition, and they were told, "You need to go to Board of Health, you need to go to the police department." So, and, we've already had a conversation with Board of Health and Police, too, that they'd come to us first, because we also took a fee from them to come, so. And they were all very generous, was also giving a donation in addition to the fee, and then the fees to the police department, but I think that's something not for tonight's conversation, that it's $150, I guess, per cory check, and one guy, he brought two trailers and he had eight guys.
Wow.
The fire chief had to do eight cory checks anyway.
The cory checks are needed because they're dealing with kids?
Kids, mhm, and we're on town property.
Is the cost set by us?
Cory?
Is the cost of 150 per cory check set by else?
The chief wasn't sure, he just knew that there was a cost, and he weighed them that night.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was just, because I didn't even know they needed to be done. I knew they needed the permit, they needed a penniless permit, and I knew they needed to go to Board of, Board of Health, I did not know they all needed the cory checks. That's, again, that's a boring experience, well, uh...
Just getting them done that quickly, was...
Yes, he came in early, he did them, and Tony did a lot of, like, work as well before. And, of course, everyone's trying to vacation, because it was the 29th of June, so we did, appreciate all the work, the extra hours people put in to get things done and get people here.
Well, coming from me personally, you know, I was there from almost onset and stayed until the fireworks were over at the nice location. Everybody seemed pretty pleased with the fireworks, with what was going on, there was no complaints there.
Yeah, I walked around, I've been to several...
Several people from out of town stopped by and asked me what was going on.
Yeah.
You know, didn't know who I was.
Yes, maybe one of the things would be, you know, try and make sure the police chief comes to one of your meetings earlier in the spring and go over, "Okay, well, I need your, I need this, or I need this, or this, you know, I need, I need to help you do that," or whatever, so that you don't run into that.
Right, and get, just want to...
No surprises.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, is there any chance that you can give us a list of the things that you plan on doing, so we can help with the advertisement and changes to, because I think that would be helpful, too, if you were, so if people ask me, I can know what's going on.
Sure, definitely.
And the vendors, and as well as the different businesses around town, have you...
We're actually going to try to do T-shirts, T-shirts this year, um, by selling sponsorship at the back of the T-shirt, so that's going to have to start early as well, because they'd have to go to the print, calling April, so that you can start selling them, because that's the hope, is that people will wear them the night of the fireworks, so. And the gentleman who actually runs or organizes the fireworks down in the field, he does Rochester fireworks, and has been doing it for like 30 years, so he gave us, they do the T-shirts, he's the one that gave us the T-shirt idea as well, which we were already kind of feeling it, it was just too late for sure. And I know a lot of people were disappointed that the morning activities didn't happen, but with no help, it's impossible.
Yeah, that was the biggest, that was the biggest complaint, it was a complaint that was concerned.
There's three of us. I mean, we were trying to get kids to volunteer Sunday morning, help us pick up the trash, trying to get their community service hours in.
Have you, have you thought about sending a letter to the high school and letting them know?
Well, we, this was how we contacted the school.
Yeah, let them know that you're looking for people around the town.
You could get Charlie to do the dunk tank, that would generate...
Why not, a dunk tank, we just got to find one.
I, I always, it was in one back 20 years ago.
I remember.
Yeah.
I can't swim, so I can't go.
If you're really tall enough to stand up. It's not that deep.
The softball and baseball teams had one.
Oh, they must have one.
I don't know where they got it from, but they...
Yeah, they must have one. Well, the fire company used to have one, because my son used to sit in it as well.
Okay, anything further?
You heard something else, it sounded like you wanted to...
I just, I just didn't know, is, is there a way for the board to waive some of the fees that the vendors have, have to come up with?
Well, the cory check fees, I doubt it, because that's a payment to the state, I suspect. Well, you can check with the police chief, but I think that's a state fee for the cory, because that...
I think they have a Board of Health fee as well.
So, is there...
Because if they need inspection, Kathy, there's a permit for that as well.
Okay. Just didn't know if there's some way we could... Well, we have to find out what the state's portion of the fee is, and are we adding to it or not adding to it? I mean, we can, we can find that out.
If it's state-required, then there's very little we can do about it, but if it's something that is coming from the town itself, as far as a charge or something...
Or a town's portion.
Town's portion, we can waive that.
Discussion with the police chief on that.
Okay.
Basically, you got three boards, all three together, because that was one of the things last year, Board of Health had one thing, police had another, and he's got to do something else, so nobody...
Again, you know, it's like with holidays in Halifax, it's trying to make, trying to get everybody in the room at the same time before the event, yeah.
Any vendors contacting Board of Health, if he's going for, send them after us first? Hey, you know, have you, that thing?
One of the things you could do is put down a short note that you give to the vendors saying, "If you're going to come to Halifax, these are the requirements."
Yeah, they had applications, they had applications, they ended up filling it and sent it back.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For your great work.
Thank you.
Enjoyed the fireworks, so hopefully next year, we'll raise enough money where we continue having the family day.
It's early, but do you have a date? Do you want to pick, because I believe the 4th is on Saturday this year, coming up.
Yes, we already picked the date, it's Saturday before...
So, the 27th?
27th.
Okay.
Sounds like you had everything in order.
Yeah, we're trying to the fireworks company, you see, we already...
Oh, no, I mean, I know lots of people will say, "Well, why aren't you airing the 4th?" But I know from the...
It's cheaper.
Yes, exactly.
You can number four.
And you, if you're getting yours in first, maybe people get tired by the July 4th, but they already went to ours.
That's why we had to cancel, because of weather, he's like, "Really?" and he gave cancel, so, like, July 29th is when our rescheduling date was going to be, that's why we had to pull the trigger, we're like, "Let's have it."
Well, you're welcome to stay, we're going to be talking to the beautification committee, maybe they can help with beautifying fireworks and...
Or rope them into volunteer.
Actually, we want to join, we want to join them.
Oh, terrific.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
What else can we sign you up for?
Well, can we make the appointments tonight?
Don't ask me, just put a carbon sheet underneath the paper, she's signed it.
They're here.
They're here.
They're, they're, they're 3D talent forms right now. Well, don't let them leave. Can you introduce yourselves?
Sure.
I'm Mike Hill, I'm a Stony Roader.
Susan Hill, also Stony Roader.
That's convenient, that way you can drive together.
We've been in town since...
95.
Yeah, 95.
Wow.
And, you know, we've been to the fireworks, not every single year, but we have enjoyed it, and when we saw that she was looking for us, somehow we figured, you know, it's time to get involved in town.
Terrific. I don't know, maybe you can have another pig kissing contest.
I brought that up.
Well, I don't have to ask too many questions, if we've got a volunteer and they're breathing, I'm good, and not to say that that's the minimum requirement.
Thanks for coming forward.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and I'm sure the members that are already on the board appreciate your assistance.
I would make a motion to approve them both to be appointed to the fireworks committee. Forever, they are second.
We've come, we've come to the hills and we're ready to cross.
Happy to second them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, what will happen is that you're going to get a letter from PM that says, "Hi, congratulations, you've been appointed," and she'll provide you with instructions about getting sworn in.
Okay.
Do you need to contact them, please?
Yeah, I can get it out, listen, I've been a Stony Roader, they might be...
Got a brand listing book right here, you want to use it?
No, yeah.
I'm kidding, I'm...
Yeah, I can have you back, really, like, uh...
Okay. I'm not trying to rush you out, but we have a 7:30 with the beautification committee, and as much as I enjoy your company, you're welcome to stay.
That's a bad, I have to, he's leaving.
He's leaving.
Thank you, okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Just I'll bring up the fact we got the latest report on the Culver. Of course, isn't.
It's a big committee.
I know.
Working.
Who's the rest of your members?
Using that wedding.
I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but.
So I'll tell the board that the recommendation.
I just got that candy.
No, look. I don't see. You'll see me later this week?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Jean Clanning on the beautification committee, everyone else is in support of what I'm giving talks about, but representing the beautification committee is not controversial, but, you know, during our cleanup day events, NIPs have been a big source of the litter. We've had discussion over time about how to, you know, possibly reduce that NIP litter. You know, we know that there's a number, we've, during cleanup day, we've found them really throughout the town, but a lot of those busiest roads. So, and there's so many roads and routes through Halifax that out-of-towners and commuters use, that we know the NIP problem is likely not just generated by our residents. So we don't think we can solve this, you know, through local action alone. Now, at two of our spring meetings, there's a resident who's kind of the local litter buster, you probably know Shirley Graff, who's, she's kind of taking it on. She started a spreadsheet, she has a whole NIP collection. She wanted me to bring it, but I told her I'd just bring the data.
Now, are you saying they're still full?
She has collected, she updated our thing today, nineteen-hundred-and-eight NIP bottles since January, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight, just in her neighborhood lawn.
I could have added about fifty of those myself, just in my front lawn.
Yeah. So we, our board, the whole committee unanimously agreed to send a letter to the representatives, Kathy Lonatra, Senator Brady, we also sent one to Josh Cutter, Mark Pacheco, just because we really believe, like I said, those solutions would have to be addressed hopefully at state level. There's currently a House bill, two, twenty-eight eighty-one, that Randy Hunt, Representative Hunt of Sandwich has, asking that at least the NIPs be added to the bottle bill, you know, start that would maybe help with cleanup, would help with deterring. You know, we don't, we think it at least would be helpful, maybe it would reduce the amount. Certainly Shirley could, you know.
Cash it in.
But anyways, currently it's, I guess, it's stuck in joint committee in the telecommunications, utilities and energy department. But what we are asking, we have a copy of the letter that I just gave you, that we sent out, you know, we, this one was to Kathy Lonatra, but we just customized them to the others. And just asking if maybe the board feel acknowledged that it's a problem and hopefully agreed of contacting the legislature, just as we did, to add the NIPs to the bottle bill. We're asking the board, wondering if you could commit to doing that.
Well, I just thought, I just saw Josh, I spoke to him about it at the Pembroke Art Fair.
Oh, yeah. He's Dutchberry and Pembroke.
And Kathy is supposed to be down here tomorrow.
Say that again?
Kathy Lonatra is supposed to be in town tomorrow.
Oh, great. At the library or?
Council on.
Oh, okay. All right. Our business.
So there's an opportunity there.
I, I know the liquor store owners don't like this idea, but I agree with you with the litter and, and the idea that people are chugging down a NIP because they're easy to conceal.
And they're driving.
And they're driving.
Right. And that's a whole.
Charlie's snickering because, you know, he's gonna have to unload his car.
And it is, that's like a part of the issue that, you know, we all have our own individual beliefs about and thoughts, but we're not addressing.
Yeah, I understand. It's the litter. The litter end of it, yeah. Trying to control the litter.
But definitely, I, I don't know if the owners would even be against adding it to the bottle bill, if that would, you know, be our chip or, you know, but there's standards on that.
Yeah.
But that's where, we're just asking if possibly.
I, I personally wouldn't have a problem supporting that.
No, I would, right.
I would support that.
Okay. Great.
Do we need a motion? The board would direct me to send letters to our legislative delegation.
I will move such. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's a great group. We're really fortunate.
The Peck Fitzgerald monument outside looks awesome.
Doesn't it look great? So those, I'd wanted to have some just updates about that. They've done a fabulous job.
This is C-Mac. Yeah, they did a great job up at the intersection there.
Haven't they? They, they really, they came forward, they offered to do that at the intersection. We don't have a formal adopt an island.
Right. I, I remember when it came up.
Hope to do that. So they've been great to work with and, you know, I asked them about, they, I mean, they certainly had so much rain this year, so as we all know at our homes, weeds are everywhere. So, but they came out again and weeded, so trying to promote that, thank them publicly. So I'd like to do that here, thank them publicly for what they've done. And also the Dr. Planter program, there's eleven locations over town. I'm drawing a blank for his name from the building.
Tom Schindler. And then, and Amy Troop. We've seen photographs of both of them.
Found all of those down in the basement in Candyman, did a lot of going around town and delivering. But we have now eleven locations, including the, you know, council on aging, the library, the church, Brockton Store, police and fire, postal office, banks.
That's great.
So that's been a, you know, nice positive thing.
Very nice.
So, and I think, I know you've mentioned.
Plastic bag. So you could talk with the board about what's going on with that too, because I guess there's legislation that would be weaker than what most of the communities have approved and would supersede.
Exactly. There's a state bill in the legislature for a state plastic bag ordinance. Hundred-twenty-two towns already have laws out of three fifty-one. The amendment seven seventy-one, most of the people in the Mastering Network and the people that really supported all the thought and did the work behind the bylaws feel that they'd almost rather have no law than this amended version because it's very watered down, allows them to use thicker bags, which, you know, even more detrimental, thicker plastic bags, no fee on checkout bags, which is part of the original bill is that if the stores were allowed to charge, you know, money for five cents or ten cents for paper bags, that, you know, then it would be more true to using reusable bags, which is the intent. We don't want, you know, paper bags to be used more. And then what was, there were three things, plus we void all the ordinances, so you have these stronger bylaws in town. You want to at least have a, you know, state law that's strong would be good, but if it's just gonna be watered down and not really benefit, so, so I think that's the status of that. I don't know how far we go or what kind of support it has.
Do you think it's counterproductive to tell them not to use the paper bags instead of the plastic because of the track it, the paper bags are biodegradable?
Right. Not, I think just encouraging people to use reusable would be better than.
You mean, they're all.
Right. Their own, you know.
The paper bags, I've been exposed to, the handles break off anyway, so it's almost like.
Right. And they're more expensive for, and they take more space up to store, they don't, you know, so protect the stores.
And then you get a huge bag for just a small item.
Right. And I know Stop and Shop, and they have a whole program that some different nonprofits are on board with, that Stop and Shop will be selling bags and they'll, the reusable type can be able to, I think they gotta charge two fifty and give it up fifty percent to the nonprofits, so like the, I think the CTO, the library, a few other places are signing up for that.
Yeah, sure.
But at least from the town's point of view, if, once the attorney general certifies the town meeting, we can start to move forward with the town bylaw and, you know, have a plan with, you know, getting information for businesses and residents with the information, implementation and some transition materials.
That should be coming soon, typically late August, early September.
Yeah. Barbara, obviously it's sent it in after town meeting, but the AG's office has ninety days, I believe, Barbara?
Yes.
To turn it around, so it takes a few months.
You have your Labor Day.
Something like that, yeah. Did you want the board to take any action about writing the legislators to oppose the weaker bill?
We haven't had a meeting, the certification. I would think that would be encouraged. It seems to, you know, at, at our next meeting, September ninth, and that's one of the things that we're gonna talk about. We are kind of informally encouraging it through like our Facebook page and just trying to let people be aware, mostly kind of build that awareness, let people know, but if, if that is something you would consider doing, it's, it's bill, I think the redraft is called seven seventy-one.
Do you have any idea when that may be coming up or is anyone?
No, I mean, you can watch the, you know, I have it as H thirty-nine forty-five, but.
Okay. Was that the original one?
I don't know.
I think the amended one might be seven seventy-one.
In either case, yeah, I mean.
I can get that information.
All we can do is watch, hear it, the, there's, on the state legislative website, they have a page for each bill and it shows the bill history, what's happening with it. All we can do at this place is, you know, when something's gonna come up, a lot of it's up to the chairs or the House leadership, or Senate leadership as to when things are gonna happen.
We're in big, in communication of that Mastering Network, and they do send out information, so I know it just as I hear it, and they tell us, you know, a week or so ahead, so that hopefully that.
Well, how does the board feel about sending letters to our legislative, you know, Jackson, the bill that's before them at this time?
I'd be on board.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if it's, if it's gonna be different than what the town just supported at a town meeting, the town voted for it, so.
Yeah, quite strongly too.
So, Charlie?
So, you know, if you're the board would vote and we'll have it on the record.
We'll move.
Move we send a letter to our legislators, our legislators and or legislature opposing the changes.
Great. Oh, that's, thank you so much.
All in favor?
All right.
Say thank you.
Bring your fingers up.
That's all right.
Well, thank you. Well, thanks for, you know, all the support and then we have a busy day, so don't pass the time.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for being.
Beautiful.
I know the board had a seven forty-five of Mr. Abro about Paradise Road extension. He, I talked to Irma this afternoon and withdraw his appointment, so he's not coming in tonight. He may reschedule at some future time, but I don't know when. So that's where that stands.
Okay. Do you have a few minutes?
Sure. Comcast, Tom had mentioned his concerns with the lack of information on the bill that customers receive from Comcast about, because right now I believe it just, we get examples of the bill once a year, and right now it just simply says franchise fee without any.
Any explanation.
And.
And if you're to call Comcast, nobody, nobody has it in their script to be able to explain it to you. And, and I'm not opposed to cable television, just to clarify, I don't mean to preempt you here, but I'd like it to be transparent so that people know what they're paying and what they're paying for.
And they have a monopoly on it as it is.
So would you like someone from Comcast to come in and meet with you possibly about the idea of getting the bill changed to provide additional information? Because there is information over the right-hand side of the bill. For instance, says, you know, regional sports fee recovers a portion of the cost to transmit certain regional sports networks. Broadcast TV fee recovers a portion of the cost of retransmitting television broadcast videos. So there's space available if they wanted to provide an explanation on the right-hand side of the bill to describe what the franchise fee is.
Well, I understand, you know, is each Comcast location a franchise?
No, the franchise fee is that the five percent that gets added on to the bill to provide the public assets, money to.
And we vote to do that. And, and that's what my problem was. We, we vote to make everybody pay this portion without any real input from anybody. And I understand it threatens the whole cable network system, but that's about to take some changes anyway from the FCC. But I don't have a problem with doing it, but paying it necessarily, but I'd like people to know what they're paying and how much they're paying.
So again, I guess I don't know whether the board would like someone from Comcast to come in to have a discussion to provide more explanation on the bill.
I would. I'd move that if anybody has any interest in supporting that.
I'll second that.
I don't have an issue with asking them to come in. I do think there's gonna be an issue shortly in a few years as people transition away from cable, because right now the only portion of the bill that's getting the franchise, the franchise.
Is the cable television part.
Is the television part and not the internet, so as everybody shifts away from getting cable TV.
When they start streaming.
We're already seeing that. If you check from a couple of years ago, I mean, it's not huge, but there's a material difference between quarterly payments we're receiving, which were in the mid-forties, and now we're getting ones in the low forties.
How does it hurt to have someone come in and explain to us why they have a franchise fee?
Well, it's not so much, what I think Tom is pointing out is not so much that we need them to come and explain to you.
It's cryptic.
He wants something more explanatory to the customers to say, well, wait a minute, what is this franchise fee? And if he's saying that Comcast, when someone calls them and they can't provide an answer, let's get an explanation on the bill, so at least people know what that franchise fee is about and what is going to.
Well, I, I was referring to Gordon's objection because it can't hurt to have someone sitting here and explaining what the franchise fees in, other than it uses us as a conduit.
But I wasn't objecting to it, Troy.
Oh, sorry.
I was just saying that as time, as time shifts, we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for that. That's all I was saying. I'm not, I'm not afraid.
Can't predict the future.
Well, in this case, probably.
Yeah.
Because we can see it happen.
Well, I ain't gonna be around when it happens, so.
You'll be around for the rest of it. You'll be around, you'll be around for this?
I mean, I'd be.
Okay, again, can I get some?
All in favor?
Again, it'll probably be a meeting in September or something like that. Well, yeah, I just want some info. I'm trying to get, you know, please tell me I'm doing what you're asking me to do.
Yes, yes, you are.
Okay, but you also asked, you, when you talked to me about this, you also asked about the actual fifty-eight, Area fifty-eight and usage of the channels and things like that. And I didn't know whether you wanted someone from Area fifty-eight.
Yeah, if, if that's possible, again, my, I'm, I'm wondering how many people are actually watching cable access TV and if it's worth what we're spending for, because we're in the two-hundred-thousand range.
And that's just ourselves, let alone Culver.
Right, right. Just our portion of it.
The only thing I'd be concerned about is how are we gonna provide the access if we didn't have that studio?
Well, my question is, if we've only got twenty people watching, and I'm just picking that number out of the air, how do we justify that kind of money? I, I'd at least like to see some data that backs up what's being spent.
I watch it all the time. It's, that's how I keep up with.
So you and nineteen others.
Well, we have a party. No, I mean, for YouTube, it's minimal. I mean, if you go to the Area fifty-eight channel.
Yeah, you can see them, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and they're in the double digits. You know, there's a couple, maybe like a town meeting or something that gets into the low triple digits, but relatively speaking, our meeting tonight, other meetings for boards and committees, if they get fifty people, that's a lot. And that, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, because the whole point was to provide a way for people who aren't subscribing to cable, an opportunity to see the meetings that way also.
I don't have a problem, and I like the idea of the meetings being taped and televised, but it's on the back of the Comcast.
But we have no idea whether we can get the information from Comcast or whether we can get the information from Area fifty-eight as to what the view, actual viewership is. I mean, problem with Comcast is more likely than not, they won't provide that information because they're gonna consider it to be proprietary.
Right.
So the question is for Area fifty-eight, do they have any data for the information? Again, I can invite someone in to have that discussion with y'all.
What prompted it was when we re-upped on the contract several years ago, and I've lost track of when that was.
Yeah, it was five years ago, I believe.
So it's coming up again?
I have to pull the actual.
So it should be close to coming up. And we did it sort of pro forma, and, and we didn't really explain to anybody who was paying for this, where, where the money exactly was coming from. And I'm just saying, I'm not opposed to cable television, I just think it would be nice for people to know what they're paying for and where it's coming from and how much they're paying for.
Would it be necessary to have someone come in from Area fifty-eight or can we send a letter to the mask and help them to provide us with that information if they can?
The board can do it either way.
Letter works if they're gonna have a lot of data, so we have the actual.
Yeah.
In writing.
Okay.
Yeah, put something documented. That would be good.
I agree. Okay, so let's see, our next point is still at eight, so I've got a couple more minutes. Oh, where are we? Zoning by law update. Back in June, the board originally sent a number of proposed zoning by law amendments to the planning board, and the planning board received them on June 20th. Under state law, the planning board is required to hold a public hearing. Those proposals within 65 days of receiving them, and the 65th day would be August 24th. And as far as I know, there's not a hearing scheduled before then, so it would fit within that timeframe. I was worried about the 65-day requirement, so I checked with Attorney Kressel of KP Law, who recommended the board select and resubmit those same proposals for zoning by law amendments to the planning board again. And that would eliminate any problem with the AG's office, because they have a checklist for each action that needs to be taken in terms of zoning by law amendments and approvals at town meetings.
So you're going on the assumption that it's not going to have a meeting on these proposals?
Well, I know they would have had to have done the notification two weeks in advance of the date. There's been no notification done, so they can't meet the August 24th deadline.
Okay, then I will move that we resubmit the proposals to the planning board.
So this is the same list, and I know that we talked about the definitions on the multifamily structures and multifamily developments, and that's not on that list. It's everything else except for that.
The only question I had on the other one that we didn't talk about that night was a single-family dwelling to be reestablished on use, sorry, as a use on lots that the use has been discontinued. If the use is by right, which it is in almost every district, what does this actually do?
Well, the problem is, if you've abandoned the use, if you've got a substandard lot, like a 5,000-square-foot lot, you can't rebuild on it without, because right now, what we say is you can't do it if you've abandoned the use for more than two years.
But if the use is by right?
I understand what you're saying, but you can't, it's by right as long as you've now met the zoning requirements. If you no longer do, and I talked to Tom back when he was the zoning enforcement officer, I talked to Rob, the same problem. I talked to attorneys at KP Law, and we need to put something in that allows a special permitting process of some sort. Either that or we eliminate the abandonment clause.
Well, he asked this question because it may eliminate this discussion, is why are we submitting it to the planning board?
Because all these would be zoning by law changes, and under state statute, what happens?
So us having this discussion is not going to influence that or change that the planning board still has to look at these proposals and follow them?
Right, so there are various entities that can submit zoning by law changes. The board's selectmen is one of them. The planning board can do it on itself also for that matter, but we're one of the entities that can send them up. Once they get sent up, the clock starts running. They're supposed to have a zoning by law hearing within a certain number of days. Once that happens, they have another 15 days to make a recommendation to some future town meeting. Now, there's a limit as to how far ahead that town meeting can be. I don't have that off the top of my head, but the idea was that we would have some sort of hearing on whatever bylaws the planning board wanted. Either these ones plus anything else the planning board wanted to bring to town meeting if they wished to do so at a town meeting this fall. The reason being for that is that we've gone through this process in the spring, and we didn't have the hearing then either. So we wanted to provide both the proposals the board had specifically brought, but also we had two petition articles. And the people had gone through the process of doing that, and they still have not been heard either by the planning board or through town meeting. And they should have that opportunity rather than waiting until a full year to have them brought forth again.
Can you just send out whatever documentation you got back from the attorney on that one, so we have that?
Yeah. So what I do need is an official vote for the board to resubmit these articles to the planning board.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney Carter?
Yep. So.
And we have.
Mr. Conway? So Mr. Conway is here to discuss the possibilities without necessarily a specific location. Although I don't know if he has one in mind, but he wanted to get a better sense from the board's selectmen about the board's feelings about retail marijuana sales. Not this is in cultivation or processing, but the retail sales. Because he's heard various things from, whether it's various residents or town officials, and wanted to get it straight from the board as to how the board would feel about the establishment of retail operation here in Halifax.
Yeah, so I'll give you a little bit of my background. So I did grow up in Halifax. I grew up on Aldean Road. Around 2011, I moved to the West Coast. I got a graduate degree in public policy out there. I've worked in the cannabis industry for the past three years. So I'm pretty intimately familiar with what the regulatory stuff looks like, what the best approach is for localities, how to get the zoning stuff all taken care of, stuff like that. So now that I've moved back here, I live in Plymouth now, I've been there about a year and a half. I've seen some towns around here that are moving forward, some others that have put a moratorium on it for a while. So I just wanted to sort of get a sense, like Charlie had said directly from the board, what the interest is. I know there was a cultivation facility. I guess they're not, they're having some issues moving forward. I know Hanson has some cultivation facilities that they're doing, but they have banned retail. So it's kind of a gray area, how you guys feel about it, how the planning board feels about it. So I just wanted to have that discussion and see if there's any feedback that you guys could provide, any insight.
For me, I'm not a big fan, so you can take that as not being a big fan. I'd rather not than do.
What does the resident, I mean, residents seem to be? I know that there was a meeting for this last year that they basically voted not to have it happen.
Well, they allow it in the industrial zone by special permit. There was a vote at the May Town Meeting two May's ago to allow it or not allow it in the commercial zone by special permit. The Town Meeting voted against it. It wasn't brought forth this May because while someone had submitted the necessary article, the planning board didn't have the hearing necessary to bring it to Town Meeting to have it voted on again. The article still exists, and that's one of the things, in fact, the board just is resubmitting to the planning board. The planning board will have a zoning by law hearing. They have the option because it was brought and defeated within the last two years. Normally, you can't resubmit something under those circumstances. You have to wait two years. But the planning board has the ability to say, okay, we're fine, we're not, we'll waive the two-year requirement and bring it back to the small town meeting.
Okay, so from what I gathered from what the vote that was taken just now, that's going to be pushed out further. So there probably won't be a meeting coming up soon.
Yes, well, actually, yeah, I mean, the idea here is, my hope, and you know, the planning board, it's up to the planning board to make the decision when they're going to have their hearing. But my hope is they'll have a hearing sometime in September, and then we'll have a town meeting in October to hear those proposals.
Okay, so September and October?
Well, yeah, that's my hope. I can't speak for the planning board on that.
Ideally, sure. I don't know if you are familiar with the planning board meeting. What were some of the concerns that people had with the commercial zone change?
Just to differentiate, the planning board actually recommended the change for allowing in the commercial zone.
Okay.
So Town Meeting voted against it.
Okay, so some of the concerns that were voiced?
Some of the concerns that were voiced were the commercial zone would be close to the school, because that's the area there, and other places.
Selling alcohol beverages.
What was that, alcohol?
Alcohol beverages and other schools.
Although there is a limitation even right now that would prohibit retail establishments, in fact, all the marijuana establishments from being within 500 feet of another liquor store or 500 feet within a school or a similar venue where kids are the primary. So for instance, one of the problems we're having with the industrial zone land, particularly out on the town line with Bridgewater, on the western end of Plymouth Street, is there's a daycare facility, there's a dance studio there. There was primarily kid-oriented venues. So when you take the circle 500 feet and you've eliminated most or all of the industrial land in that specific location. So that someone who might think that's an appropriate place, they can't do it because they're within the 500 feet. But, you know, the object, you know, I think there's, basically, I think there are people who feel 500 feet isn't enough. They just don't want it even 1,000 feet away from the school or something like that. So by allowing in the commercial zone, there's commercially zoned land that is more than 500 feet, but still for some people relatively close to facilities that they don't want to see it close to. Some of it may be more in Tom's line also, in the sense of just, we don't, they don't feel that they want that type of place here in Halifax. Even though the town voted to allow it and has voted to allow it in the industrial zone, they might feel, okay, it's out there in the outskirts, that's one thing. If it's in the center of town, it's something different.
And that's probably why the cultivation facility was a little bit more easier to get through.
That was different in the sense, too, they weren't going to dispense at all.
Right, right. Any issues about voters, people concerned about that?
Well, that came up with the growing facility. They talked about scrubbers and that kind of thing.
So that wasn't as big a concern as the other stuff?
Well, you know, for the butters.
Well, yeah, for the butters. Well, that's who brought it up.
Right.
I mean, I don't know, given now that there's, what, about 20, I think, here in Massachusetts, I don't, you know, I think probably if.
That doctor was the latest one.
Well, they have a problem they can't transport over the waters.
Which I understood, they license it, but they can't get it over there.
But I think, you know, one of the things that might happen is if we have actually ended up having retail application, I suspect whether it's the board or the planning board or the ZBA was ever doing permitting and consent agreements and everything like that, that there'd be some, sorry, I don't mean to say that they'd be imbibing or the inhaling or anything like that, but in a sense, they might do some field work and go out to various establishments, talk to the town officials in those locations and say, okay, what's worked, what's not worked? In the sense of like with the orders, in the sense of, is that a problem? If it has been, how have you worked with that establishment to try and reduce that as a problem?
Is there any update on where four daughters is at today?
Four daughters got bought by Verano several months ago, then Verano just got bought by Harvest, something like that.
Harvest Health and Recreation, do you have a do you know?
Yes, just a few weeks ago. So I know none of those entities have reached out to the town to say, we're ready to start the licensing procedure at the state level. They haven't submitted, and then none of them has really gone to the planning and ZBA for the necessary zoning permits. So, I mean, the host community agreement is still good, but it's been more than a year and they haven't moved forward. We don't know whether they're ever going to proceed.
Was there a time limit on that for them to act?
No. Well, from my point of view, you know, I go by what the people decide to do. They voted, not overwhelmingly, but the majority of people voted to legalize marijuana in Halifax when it was on the market. They voted to have it in an industrial area, not the commercial. You know, I don't drink or smoke, so it's one of those deals. You either pour alcohol or not. We have nine liquor licenses in town.
So I get the sense from you that it's sort of like, yeah, it's allowable, let's keep it in the industrial zone.
Yep.
Now, there was also mention of agricultural buffer zone, 300 feet.
That is another article that's been brought to the same, you know, we're talking about the planning board and such. That's another article that was by petition. So what they said, what the petitioners asked for, a buffer of another 300 feet so that it couldn't be within 300 feet of any land that was zoned residential or agricultural. So again, what you'd end up with, you know, you look at the industrial zones, look at those ones that are tangent to or budding residential agricultural zone, and most of the land in town is residential agriculture. And then you'd have to press in, in essence, 300 feet from that line between the industrial zone and the agricultural residential zone and say, okay, that's an additional part of the industrial zone land that we wouldn't allow. But again, that's going through the same process that we're talking about allowing or not allowing the commercially zoned land. That's the same process. So the petition article is, at the zoning, would be brought to the zoning, sorry, the planning board for a hearing. The planning board will make a recommendation. Whether or not they recommend it, it still goes to Town Meeting eventually and be voted on by the Town Meeting.
So the bottom line is, it's up to what the people decide and what.
Was there any input from the community on the housing agreement at all, or was it kind of standard thing?
Oh, yeah, we had.
Yeah, several hearings.
And people showed up and asked where I would like to see that?
Yeah, we had a big presentation. I don't know whether we filled the hall, but significant, 60 people upstairs for at least one of them.
What was your concerns?
Yeah, and if you go to our website, you'll, in fact, there's still recording up there on the website.
Yeah, I watched it a little bit today. But I was curious when the host community agreement was finalized, how much of that stuff made it in?
Well, I think a fair amount of it went in. I mean, I think the board took it into account, what the concerns were. I mean, one of the things that we've done very differently than many other communities was, I'll put this. I don't think that the board has, we didn't put any, okay, you've got to give $10,000 for the fireworks.
Right, right, right.
We went with the straight. Yeah, and I don't, I know there's a lot of debate statewide, and I know there's debate with the Canvas Control Commission whether that's allowable or not. My feeling was, under the strict reading, that it wasn't something that we would be allowed to do and that it would be up to the town. If you want to, you know, if we're going to get 3%, we want to use some of that money for the fireworks or whatever other thing. But we shouldn't be in a situation that we're shaking down people, whatever, you know, any more than we shake down Walmart.
I hate that term. Every chance we go.
Well, yeah, but that's on an individual basis, and it's not the board coming in, hey!
Softball, the baseball fireworks.
We went right into the agreement.
Yeah, but you don't put, you know, that's a nice food license you got there, shame if anything happened to you.
But it's usually like a percentage of whatever revenue is, that gets into a fund.
Yeah.
So there was nothing specific?
Well, it was 3%, we went with the 3%, but there was nothing that said, plus, you're going to give $10,000 fireworks and whatever else.
Anyone else have brought up retail locations?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
They have?
That's why I went before Town Meeting, because the individual wants to change the zoning by law to allow for the business to be accepted as a retail business.
So, I mean, there have been, people have been interested. Right, I mean, we haven't gone into our host community agreement or anything like that. Again, as I mentioned, you know, as I try to describe it, no one's, especially now that I, I think eventually it's going to be ubiquitous, just like liquor stores are.
Yeah.
So no one's going to necessarily go out of their way and say, hey, let's get everybody in the car and go to the marijuana retail establishment, you know, in Halifax for a day trip or something. I mean, there's only 20 of them right now. There are people who drive an hour to get someplace. But I think it's going to, a lot of that's going to depend on what's available at that retail establishment versus ones that are closer in. But it's not like we're going to go apple picking and that we have to go out to a certain location to do that. I think it's going to be ubiquitous, and I think, you know, people are going to see it all over. But the thing is, right now, where we've allowed the zoning is very, based on the attractiveness in the sense of, no one wants to go to South Halifax for a retail establishment. If you're going to do retail, you're probably going to do retail where there's retail already. And if you look at the locations for the 20 establishments that have been licensed, that's probably what you'll see is that they're in commercial retail areas. Maybe they're in industrial parks also, obviously, but there are prime land in the sense of land that's near a state road or state route in this case. But, and might already have buildings or might have places developed, well, that's pretty much knocked out. The other land that's available as industrial is out on the periphery, which is basically farmland and such, away from most of the road. So, I mean, you know, there's a balancing act for someone who wants to run the retail. I want a location, but I want it someplace where we're going to see a lot of traffic.
Yeah. It's all about the location, if it's, if it's in a industrial zone or it's in a town.
Well, except that, you know, 106 is more traffic than Halifax anyplace else. So, I mean, yeah, the direction being right across the road to 106 and 58, but there's still a fair amount.
Triple D, man.
There's still a fair amount of traffic going through by that industrial area. So I think people saw it as a potential location. I had, we had somebody, there's a blue industrial building, but it's in the commercial zone on the south side of 106, and somebody was interested in having that as retail, but they found out it was in commercial, so they couldn't go ahead and do it. I mean, we'll see how everything shakes out, both, you know, with this board and with the planning board and with Town Meeting as to, as the market matures, will there be a change in opinion about whether or not to allow it?
And are you a registered voter?
Yes.
So you're becoming the Town Meeting, right?
Well, I do.
Yeah, that's right. It does stop you from coming to the Town Meeting.
You're going to sit with me, though, so.
But does that answer your questions?
Yeah, it does. That's all the questions that I had. I appreciate I have a much better idea about how to move forward if I, if I wanted to.
Yes, comment.
May I ask, Mr. Carter, what location you were interested in?
Oh, I don't have a set location yet. I just wanted to see how things would shape out from commercial versus.
Do you have other shops in Plymouth?
No.
No, this will be your first one?
So my job right now is to help people go through the application process at the local level. So I don't own any myself, but I've helped people in Pittsburgh, Wareham, and then California set up shops.
So it wouldn't be your shop, you decided?
Oh, no, I've decided I'd like to do it myself.
Oh.
Yeah, so it would be mine, yeah. Well, if it happens.
All right, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So we've got still, of course, we had three weeks of stuff, so I've still got stuff to go through here in my notes.
Don't apologize.
Transfer for town vehicle, this is 2012 vehicle from the police department, the building maintenance department. I'm just telling you that it happened. There's no action for the board to take. Pam is handling all the paperwork, and I'm working for the insurer and the departments. I did want to tell the board, we got information from the building inspector about the possibility of a group home being built on 123 Palmer Mill Road. There's already a house there, but it may be turned into a group home residence. They may require a site plan of some sort. I know that Rod has made a determination. He's been working with Land Use Council about that. I did want the board to be aware of it so that if the board at some point in the future wanted to publicize this site plan process, if there is one or anything like that. The town cannot prohibit this use. It's allowed, it's one of the uses that's allowed by right under, not just our zoning by law, but through the state zoning act, chapter 48. So we can do a site plan, but you can't, for instance, in the site plan review, unreasonably restricted to try and prohibit it. I wanted the board to be aware of this and so that at least if somebody asks you about it, you weren't totally surprised by it.
Thank you.
407 South Street foreclosure process. Alan Diaz had talked with me earlier, I think, last week about the possibility of the town receiving a bank check for the full amount owed as part of the redemption process. It would include the taxes and all the other expenses we've incurred for the property, but not cashing the check until the redemption process was completed. I checked with the treasurer collector's office. I checked with the treasurer collector's office, town council, tax hour council, all were agreement that the town should not do this. What should happen is the town should receive the check and get it cashed. The interested parties could complete then the redemption process without opposition from the town, and then the interested parties will resolve whatever purchase and sales agreement they have. This would be between the gamble estate and whoever is interested in buying the property.
Yes.
I agree with what you said. I agree with all that you said, especially the town, tax town council telling us not to do it.
Right. So I'm going to inform Mr. Diaz, look, we'll copy again, we're not going to oppose this, but we want our money up front, we want that check in our bank before we give the okay to the court.
I want the check, I want the cash.
Okay, we get the cash.
So how, how does this process work?
So the gamble estate will go to court to get the foreclosure, basically go through the redemption process.
They have a year to redeem. I was just going to say, they have up to a year to redeem.
Normally, yeah, there was, actually, when we went through a procedure that sort of nullified that, but we're waiting a typical year anyway. And what would happen is, the court basically would be saying to us, are you opposed to this? Or do you want to prevent this from happening? As long as we have the money sitting in our bank now, we said, hey, judge, we're fine, everything's paid up. We got no problems with redeeming the property. And then, once they redeem it, the gamble estate would then own it, and then the gamble estate could then sell it to another party. So that's my plan.
Okay.
Pine Street Culvert, I had told Steve about this, this isn't a surprise. This is the one where we have the Jersey barriers up and narrow the road. It's in horrible condition. It's still safe enough to drive with those restrictions, and he's working with engineering firm to get the design work, but we knew that was going to take about a year's worth of time to get done. But nevertheless, Mastaut does periodic reports, the latest one has been done, and we got it, and Steve has a copy, so it's not a surprise or anything, they are. Waste managers in contract, they wanted changes in the contract concerning number of years and the pricing, et cetera. So council and Steve and Susan Johnson are all working on that, so there's no action for the board to take. Just wanted the board to be updated on that. We already talked about marijuana and Four Daughters, and the fact that Ronald's been purchased by Harvest Health. We are getting, we're not at Twin Lakes Liquors license transfer yet. Just so the board's aware, we did get the application for the renewal of the earth removal license for White Dog Cranberries. That's up, we know the hearing's going to be on September 10th. Perkins Cemetery, the Board Select and its role as cemetery commissioner has received a request to hold a wedding at the Perkins Cemetery.
Okay. We're holding a wedding at the cemetery?
You had a request to hold.
Request, yes.
On Wood Street, a year from now, Susan Bissil had wrote that she's strongly opposed to the use of the cemetery. I talked to Steve, his role as cemetery superintendent. Basically, there's just, it's a historical cemetery, it's, people have harmed it before, whether it's
It's fragile.
It's fragile.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's a very delicate, you know, stand, people are going to be walking all over the place, how do you?
So unless the board feels otherwise, if you wanted to instruct Kim to send a note back to the person who made the request to say, thanks very much, sorry, if you want, for instance, to hold it at the Central Cemetery, then you don't want to make that.
Unless they've got relatives there and they want somebody to attend it.
I'm not even going to go there, I'm leaving that alone.
I can understand the sentimental view if they've got relatives there, ancestors or somebody that wants to be at the wedding, but still, in the cemetery?
Takes all kinds, what can I tell you?
I, I think we're pretty much opposed, yes.
So just leave.
I don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah. So just, I'll leave that alone for Kim to send a letter saying sorry, but the Perkins Cemetery's off limits. You want me, if you want me to, I'll sign it, I don't care. Perkins, okay. September 11th, fire department holds September 11th observance on that day at 10:00 a.m. for the fire station. Public's invited to attend that. Council on Aging Director in the search, notices were published, it's not last week, it's now been four weeks ago. The applications are due actually this week. There are 12 in so far. As far as the search committee is concerned, I provided the board with a list of everybody. I tried to put it into categories there. The board, you know, we had talked originally about doing five or seven people. We have many more people interested than even seven people. I know we had talked about, for instance, with the council on aging, just keeping it down to two, that would eliminate quorum problems and things like that. So I know that, let's see, so the two people, if the board wanted to, to appoint two from the council, their interest in having Ava Grimison and Ellen Murphy serve on that. Gene Gallot and Barbara Gainer as town officials had indicated an interest. And then residents who vote, Mary Gravenese, Martha Smith, Jas Haywood, Harrod Town, Judy Rakoudis, I think it is. Dottie Martell, who's a Puntin resident, but she's on the generations board. Christine Topkins, there's a letter that I gave each of you, a copy of them, and also Sarah Slope, who are all interested in serving.
I think more than seven would be too cumbersome.
Well, I think the two from the council on aging are pretty much a good idea, and so Gene and Barbara, I, I would have difficulty picking from the residents, because there's so many of them, and I know.
Well, not my two cents on everybody, but I would think, Mr. Town, I would recommend simply that there's nothing wrong with an all-women's search committee, but it would be nice to have a little bit of resignation from both genders on the committee.
Well, in terms of
I know Sarah wrote a long letter to you all about why she's interested. Ms. Topkins did a shorter letter.
I talked to Mary Gravenese today, she was still interested.
I think Martha has been involved, I think she'd do a decent job.
There is Harold. Workers' Cop, I'll tell you right now.
There was one in there earlier.
So what did we decide, seven people?
Well, we certainly weren't going to stop at five and give it, because we originally thought maybe five, but then we had, even very early on, a number of people showing an interest, and so we bumped it to seven. Troy's point's well taken, at some point it becomes cumbersome having a whole boatload of people on there. But it's up to the board to make that decision.
I, I would vote for Mary Gravenese. Gravenese?
Gravenese.
Gravenese. Martha Smith and Harold Towney.
Okay, along with the Gene and Barbara and?
Gene and Barbara.
And Ellen.
And Ellen, the two.
Do you want a motion?
That gives us seven, right?
Yeah, so. I'm not sure those are the three.
You would have, well, the first four would be Ava Grimison and Ellen Murphy, then Gene Gallot and Barbara Gainer, if you want those four, and then you need to still pick three of the residents, and we could bring it to seven. And Troy suggested three people, I don't know how the board feels.
Second, Troy's.
Can we have two different motions?
Still need one more. Out of my list, Martha Smith and Harold Towney, I had two to the left.
Then you said Mary Gravenese.
Yeah, Mary Gravenese.
So I would bring you to seven. So why don't we start off with the first four? If everybody's in agreement for the two from the council on aging and the two from the town officials.
What did you have in mind, Joe?
I, I was thinking about Janice, but I, I, it's, it's fine. If you guys want to go that route, that's fine with me.
So if somebody wants to make a motion for us.
I'll make a motion for the.
Based on what, Troy?
Based on Troy's.
Yeah, I'll second it if you're not going to feel comfortable seconding Tom.
That's fine.
I think, I, I think that while they have the meetings, I think everybody that's interested should go.
Some of it may be in executive session. The, it's going to be up to the committee to make that decision, as to, for instance, whether the preliminary interviews are going to be in executive session, but the.
It just seems like if the people are available to make it to the meetings, it would be one of the meetings we should try to let people attend.
Want to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In terms of any charge, committee, obviously, and one of the things is to move the process along, and I'm not serving as a member even ex officio, and I'll try and attend the meetings and make sure that they get the assistance they need, you know, in terms of getting appointments made and setting up meetings, everything like that. I didn't know whether you wanted to give them a specific charge, for instance, the number of candidates that should be finalized, because, for instance, I was thinking earlier today, you know, three is many times the normal number that we would send to, as finals to whatever. Problem is, okay, then somebody drops out, now you're down to two. Do you want to, do you want to pick three as a? I mean, obviously, you want them qualified. You don't want this committee to recommend somebody simply because you said, we want X number of candidates, but at the same time, I think you might want to encourage them to, in fact, provide you with a certain number of candidates.
I think five would make sense.
I think five.
And then give us who they think is their top choice?
Well, obviously, they'd make a recommendation. I don't know if, I suppose five works.
How many have we picked and received at this point?
Twelve at this point.
My initial thought was three, but.
Yeah, well, it's always my initial thought, too.
I think that's enough people to kind of bet.
Yeah, can we go in the middle and look at four?
It's fine, too.
Yeah, I'm open to anything.
If one drops out, you got three.
Yeah.
All right, why don't we go with four?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
So what happened, Kim, Troy, go.
So who did you guys run on for? I know you guys voted on your, on the committee, so.
I move for.
Second.
So what will happen is, I'll notify everybody that the appointments are being made, they have to get sworn in with Barbara. We'll try and get a first, probably do some, there's, there are ways of trying to get a coordination for times and dates, so I'll try and do that and get things moving. The applications are due this Friday. Probably, my hope is that the committee will need some time next week to review the applications and make a decision whether they will, for instance, want to interview everybody, whether they want to interview a smaller subset, whatever they want to do. You had at 8:25, which was a continuance with a revocation hearing for Davis. Oh, sorry, one thing, for the interim, I'm asking the board to appoint Brenda Fitzgerald as the interim director, starting on August 22nd, to a date to when the new director would start serving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just on the revocation hearing, I talked to Stephanie Davis, she said she'd be in later this week to talk to the treasurer collector's office. The board had already voted a couple, a few weeks ago to revoke license effective tomorrow, and it's going to take effect. Doesn't mean I'm going to go down there and pull a license off the wall, and that's what I told her specifically. And what I'm recommending, therefore, is the board simply continue this hearing for another two weeks, and then, in the meantime, if she does make the arrangements with the collector's office, that the board can rescind its revocation.
I'll move that.
Do you need a, did you second one, or do you need a?
No, I did a second.
I'll second, though.
All in favor? And we've heard at 8:30 for the transfer of the liquor license for Evergreen, which is the Twin Lake, doing businesses, Twin Lake Liquors, to Subham Inc. Kim, has all the paperwork been received? The board has copies of everything?
People, they have copies of liquor, I have the whole package here if anyone wants to take a few of ours.
And are folks here representing?
Yes.
The parties?
Yes.
Is anybody here from town? Please, I would see front, front.
This is 36.
This is 36 or this is 58?
No, this is 36.
And everything else that's necessary has been filed, correct?
I'm sorry, no, no. This is 58, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I was thinking 58 and saying.
How you feeling? Well, you got a nice bodyguard, so you have to order that.
So who would like to start the presentation?
Yeah, I suppose it's buyer's attorney, that means our application.
So could you, if you could identify yourselves to?
My name is Matthew Porter, I'm the attorney for Supam Inc.
May I?
Yes.
Yes, please, not a problem.
I think I have on the application.
So before the board, this is the transfer of the section 15 package store license, this is for Twin Lake Liquors, as you are well aware. With me is Vishnu Patel. Mr. Patel is the sole shareholder, 100% shareholder of Supam Inc., and he also be the proposed manager on the license as well. So fairly straightforward transaction as far as the business transaction is concerned. The money is all in order, it's an escrow transaction with the seller thus far. I know that there's some building issues, and I'm sure that we'll get into those. But I guess as far as, you know, the paperwork transaction of it, and as far as the applicant and his experience in the liquor industry, which, you know, is over a decade old with no violations whatsoever, certainly a very strong buyer and someone that I think would be.
Where is he located at this point?
Yeah, you want to talk about your other stores?
Yes, that money, that Manic General Store I owned, like, that last eight years.
Where?
That's right, sorry, Manic General Stores, next to it. 136.
My ex-general store, is that, which, which general store was that?
Manic General.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And you've been there eight years prior to that? What'd you do prior to that, with the dairy business before that?
Before, I was in Hanover Stores, that are home street, my nephew owned it like that. But last day, I is at our Hanover Store, I own it like that, my nephew, last name.
I, I looked at this earlier, everything seemed in order.
Yeah, so I suppose for us, and perhaps the board can shed a little bit more light, I, I think it was only today that we learned about some, you know, building code issues, you know, within the property itself. And certainly, you know, intention of system move forward, the transaction still needs to go up to the state board, you know, for approval, which is going to give us roughly a month to sort things out. But we did want to get some recommendations on where the building stands and what type of issues there are that may need to be corrected in order to get the buyer up and running.
I, I know the building inspector and the fire chief have looked at it several times, and there are some obvious deficiencies.
Sure.
It doesn't take too much to figure some of that out.
Oh, yeah, that's certainly true, and I think the buyers are well aware going in, you know, that there would need to be some fixing up of the property. The concern is just what it is that they're getting themselves into, and, you know, what type of money would need to be invested in that to get it up to code.
Yeah, I don't know that we would have that information available here, that would be the bill.
Even he wouldn't have that.
Rob sent a simple letter to the board, which said, you know, he had no problem along with the fire chief with the transfer, but that he was not going to issue a certificate of occupancy until all those problems were addressed. He did not list all the problems.
Okay, and that's what I wasn't sure of. I didn't know whether that was addressed to the board or not, so it's just a matter of reaching out to them directly.
Not at this time.
Okay.
I, I don't want to speak for him, but I would suspect he's going to want some kind of a design professional or engineer to review the property and make their recommendations.
Sure, yeah, so we can reach out to them directly, along with sellers, all I'm sure.
Well, as far as the transfer of license concerned, I don't have any issues with that. Does the rest of the board?
Just, just to be clear, are we just purchasing the license, or are we purchasing the property?
It's the property as well.
Okay, I, I just wanted to be sure. That actually appeals to me more, because now you've got more control.
No, it's a property and business.
Okay, just to, just to clear it up.
Same buyer, both.
Okay.
Is he ready?
I'm good.
Good with the questions, Chris.
I don't know if there's anybody, it's a public hearing, I don't know if anybody's here to speak to this.
Is anyone here to speak to the transfer of the license of Twin Lakes to Subham? No? For everyone who is pleased.
I'll, I'll make a motion to transfer title, or transfer the license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, we're good. All right, thank you.
Good evening.
All right, you too.
Do we need to sign this, though? Thank you.
All right, thanks, all right, good luck, take care.
Charlie?
State budget, no actions needed right now, but just so the board's aware of the earmarks that were included in the budget. Unlike past, unlike past years, the governor did not decide to spend time vetoing things. He just took it as is and signed the whole thing. It's been rare.
It's been rare. But twenty-five thousand would be expended for the Halifax Council on Aging. It doesn't specify what for. It might be operational, it might be infrastructure, whatever. Hundred twenty-five for, expended for testing and treatment of cyanobacteria and related containment of Mount Ponce Pond. Also, a hundred and fifty-five thousand to the Central Plymouth County Water District Commission for a number of programs and services, and also fifty thousand to the commission for improvement and management of lakes and ponds.
Just two copies, Pam?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other than the executive session, I have just, oh, I have a few more things. Three ninety-five Plymouth Street, Chris Carmichael had written a note back to me. He was the special zoning enforcement officer. He works in Norton, but was serving as special and zoning enforcement officer here for Halifax for this case. Sorry, the site plan is needed for the change from four units to six units at that address. I'll notify the building inspector and the owner of the property, so go from there. As I mentioned, Paradise Lake extension that got, not postponed, but canceled that meeting. War Street Stub, I did send a notification by surfer mail to the Two Butters, that the town would protect this interest for that stub. I'm waiting for the traffic safety committee to hold a meeting. This was on Wallack Street and the truck traffic and speeding. I'm still waiting to hear from Solitude about what we might be able to do about invasive weeds on East Mount Ponce Pond. And then lastly, the Hops Playground, all the work that Friends of Hops did has resulted in us, in fact, getting the fifty thousand dollar reimbursement from the state for their open space recreation grant program.
This is an addition to the other one?
No. So they've obviously came up with their own money, but the town back in seventeen had sent in a grant application, which was approved, and this is finally now we're getting reimbursement.
I was getting excited, I thought it was an addition.
Sorry, no, we're not getting a hundred, but I'll take the fifty as it is.
No, fifty's good. Kudos to the Hops Committee. They've done a great job, and I've heard numbers of raid reviews on the playground and how it looked.
It worked for years, raising money. That is one heck of an effort.
Well, and the amount of money that they raised is far beyond anything else anybody had done now, since when.
The abatement requests.
So you have an abatement request, and you have a road opening?
Yeah.
Do you want to do the road opening first, since that probably is a little simpler than the abatement requests?
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah. The road open in, everything's all set. We just need one detailed officer. It's going to be for a four-by-six road cut tie in and four-by-forty-five road trench to install new gas service at four seventy-three North Street. Everybody else signed off on conservation. They will get a trench permit, which they have all the time. Highways are there, and law is okay with it. And again, the one detail officer.
Is there a motion?
Motion's approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we sign on?
She's got it.
There you go.
One signature?
Yeah, just one, yeah. And then we call this everybody. Yep.
That's it.
I would like to move the following abatement request. It's listed, one seven, one three, one two nine four, twenty-one thirty-two, twenty-one forty-six, one four nine eight, two three nine five, six eighty-two, two one one seven, two zero three zero, two oh four, seven seven two, one five four two, one four five nine, two five one zero, eight six nine, two four two one, two zero two four, one five three nine, one four zero five, one seven one nine, six five seven, three three four, six nine four, two one one three, nine two three, twenty forty-five, nine eighty-nine, twenty-one fifty-six, three forty-four, one five two two, one two nine seven, two three six seven, one nine two four, one two two, eight one six, two one two one, two one six seven, six twenty-five, one eight seven seven, one seven eight five, one five one one, and one zero three three. The, and the reason I'm moving these is that we have letters from their vendors saying, in fact, they are recycling through a private vendor, and we follow the process that we were outlined in order to receive this. Do you need a second? Second.
Two seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the next thing you guys need to do is slide it back. Because they're in order.
Well, and you can do that with the order part of the things. So you ordered the street opening, and we just did the abatements.
Was there something you wanted to say?
Yeah, can you hurry up? I'm just joking. I'm a reporter, I'm here. Just, hey, I'm just waiting.
Well, in fact, can we hurry up for your benefit, Russ?
Yeah, Gordon.
Could you give the information for the contact information for the new zoning officer?
Well, you mean for the special that we did? Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Given we have nothing else left for public consumption.
So you know, that was a one-shot. I mean, I'm happy to give it to you, but it was a one-shot. It's not, he won't be doing this on an ongoing basis. Am I missing, am I not translating well? He only was handling the question of whether a site plan was going to be needed for three ninety-five Plymouth Street. It was a one-shot.
So then he's out of the picture?
Right, well, yeah, that was the only thing he was doing.
So he's not a special...
He was a special, not for anything else. It was this one shot, one property, one question.
I just don't understand how he's, he's still on that project, though.
Well, we, the board only had one question to him, but it was directed, was a determination as to whether a site plan was needed for that project. It had, we weren't, the board did not say to him, "We need you on an ongoing basis." It was one shot, one question, one project.
So if anything else comes up on that project, he's the guy?
Well, no, it was, again, they only, we, the board specifically said, "Here's what we need you to do, determine this." They didn't say, "And issue building permits if it comes up," or answer other questions if they come up, because, I mean, if it, if it ends up that Rob gets into a situation that he feels that it's not, it's a matter of interpretation or something like that, then Rob certainly can come back to the board's selectman and say, "I'd like you to contact Mr. Carmichael again with these additional questions," so, because I'll take myself out of it, because whether...
Because Rob has taken himself out of that at this point, right?
For, on that particular question.
Not the project?
Not the project, no.
How do you just come up with one item? I don't understand.
Because that's what the board, I mean, that's what the board did.
I just thought if you had a conflict in something, and you had to bring somebody in, you can't bring somebody in and give an opinion and then get back into that.
Well, I guess that's what the board's done so far. I guess there's, there's a question of, I think, maybe, I'm maybe not interpreting for the board very well, but there's ministerial duties and ones that require an opinion or something like that. The issue, if, if someone has fulfilled, for instance, the requirements of getting the building permit, for instance, let's say, right now, they need a site plan. If they've gotten the other, anything else that needs to be done in order to get the building permit, it's a ministerial duty for Rob to make, to actually issue the building permit. But we have not asked Mr. Carmichael to do anything else than make that decision as to whether a site plan was needed or not. If the board tells me otherwise, if the board says to me at some point, later point, "We want Mr. Carmichael to, in fact, take these other actions, make these other decisions," then the board will tell me to do that, and I'll contact Mr. Carmichael.
I'm just misunderstanding. I thought that you appointed somebody to land, you know...
Only on that one question. That one question.
So we don't have an assistant zoning officer?
No, it was a special zoning officer for that particular question.
He's gone.
For now, he's gone, yeah. Again, if the board tells me otherwise, they'll tell me otherwise. So for the executive session tonight, I'm asking the board to go into executive session on the waterman grievances and claims. This is, the heavy equipment operator wage issue's already been decided, so the board's not going into that. However, release of the personal file documents, the two-week suspension and termination, also ongoing negotiations with patrol officers and the highway cemetery unions, the filing for certification for the new union, which we may have for the water department, building maintenance, and administrative assistance. And going into executive session is due as discussing the strategy with respect to collective bargaining, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. In addition, the board's going into executive session to continue discussion on the interest versus Halifax under Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding the town of Halifax, as regarding strategy with respect to litigation at open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. My suspicion is the board would probably hold two votes and have two executive sessions. In either case, the board's planning on coming back in open session or to have any announcements at the end of the meeting.
Gordon?
I would make the motion and vote yes to the first meeting, and I have a comment on the second.
I'll second.
Yes?
Yes.
Darren, yes.
So I recuse myself from the second, but I still would like to have a better understanding from the board as to where the farmhouse was a multifamily development, why there has been no other recusals over this lawsuit.
Can you make sure that Gordon's comment right there is included in the minutes?
Okay, so I'm trying, so I...
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
No, 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 I understand that, but I make, I want to make sure that it's not ignored in case the board doesn't do anything else, at least the comment is on.
First and second executive session, if you had a comment, please.
Yeah.
If there is a comment, okay, go ahead.
So the comment was, "I don't understand why we have recusals on some properties that deal with multifamily and zoning where we don't on others."
Some, go ahead, some what?
Multifamily developments and not on others.
Troy or Tom, if you could move to go in for the second executive session?
I move we go into executive session for...
Andrews versus Halifax.
Andrews versus Halifax, for reasons that Charlie listed earlier.
Yes.
Yes.
You're not going to open, come back and go in?
No.
That's what I said. So we can tell our friends.